Very much. Thank you. I will call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council, January 18th, 2022, at 3:10. And for those of you that are just tuning in to help the slow of the transmission of COVID-19 and protect the health and safety of the community, city council, as well as boards and commission meetings will continue to be closed to the public for in-person attendance. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live in high-definition on the city's webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.communityglendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices using a free app called Screenweave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. For public comments and questions during this meeting, call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. And with that, we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian.
Present.
Brotman.
Here.
Kusakian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Devine.
Here. And your report, please.
The agenda for the Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, special public meeting of the city council was posted on January 12th, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And what's next, please?
Item one would be community development regarding landlord-tenant ad-hoc committee members selection and appointment. A motion providing direction on the selection and appointment of members for the landlord-tenant ad-hoc committee. B motion, appointing members to the landlord-tenant ad-hoc committee.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As it was read into the record, we are seeking direction from council on appointment of seven candidates to become members of this landlord- tenant-ad-hoc committee that was approved by council back in August of last year. The good news is there was an overwhelming response to this process and the application. Sixty-two people applied. Staff has gone through all the applications and vetted them and reduced it to fifty-two that qualified per council's direction. And I am going to turn it over to Peter Zovak, our Assistant Director of Community Development, who will provide a brief, quickly, a brief background and the purpose behind the formation of this ad-hoc committee, as well as their area of purview. And then he will also cover the process that we have come up with in the hopes of making the selection more effective and more efficient on council's behalf. With that, Mr. Zovak.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor Devine, members of the city council. Let me start by sharing the PowerPoint presentation. It'll be a brief presentation. Okay. Can that slide be seen by everybody?
I can see it.
Okay. So as the city manager Galanian had mentioned, this is staff coming back to the city council on a discussion of the landlord-tenant ad-hoc committee member selection and appointment. As the city manager had mentioned, the ad-hoc committee was formed back in, and the concept of it was formed by the city council back in August 24th, 2021. At that time, the council had approved the implementation of the landlord-tenant ad-hoc committee. And today, staff seeking direction from the city council on the selection of the seven-member board. And that approval of the ad-hoc committee came after a number of months of discussion by the city council, looking into the issue of tenants and land, issues and policies affecting tenants and landlords. And the direction was is that the establishment of this committee could assist in future policy development. And very quickly, at that August 24th meeting, council decided that, made the decision that the mission and task of the ad-hoc committee is to serve as a conduit for citizen input, gathering, analyzing, and recommending options on the Glendale landlord-tenant rental housing issues to the city council for future consideration. So it is advising to the city council. The work plan was also approved by the city council. That work plan includes the review of the rental rights program and recommending any changes to enhance the ordinance if needed, to discuss and develop best practices for education and marketing on landlord-tenant issues in Glendale moving forward, and to discuss and evaluate a voluntary dispute resolution program for landlords and tenants. As the city manager had mentioned, after a robust advertising process that staff performed to get information out to the community about the availability to apply to this committee, sixty-two applications were received through the city's online portal. Staff was able to review the applications, and we were looking for completeness, and we were independently verifying the status of each applicant as they indicated on their application as to whether or not they were a tenant, whether or not they were applying as a landlord, whether or not they were applying as a neutral party or some other representative, as a tenant landlord representative. We did contact each applicant. It was not an interview of each applicant. It was simply confirming that they applied, making sure that they understood what they were applying for, the role of the committee. We gave an idea where we thought this was moving forward. We did indicate to everyone that we thought that this would be moving forward to the council in the new year. And we did let everyone know that there was overwhelming interest in the ad-hoc committee, and as a result, would be going back to council for direction on the appointment. After going through and contacting everyone, that sixty-two application list was, then they went down to fifty-two applications in which people expressed an interest, continued interest in the program. Again, so a little more background. When you did establish the ad-hoc committee, council did establish it as a committee, ad-hoc committee that would last for twelve months. There would be monthly meetings, and those monthly meetings have been scheduled for 6:00 PM on the fourth Wednesday of each month. Those meetings will be televised on GTV6, and that is one of the remaining open meeting dates that GTV6 had to be able to broadcast on a scheduled basis. So it is the fourth Wednesday of every month at 6:00 PM. At the time, the council also established a stipend that would be given to each of the committee members. And so each committee member will be given $50 per attended meeting as a stipend for their work on this ad-hoc committee. And then in lieu of having a chair, process of a chair being appointed, the city council did agree with the staff recommendation of having a professional facilitator that would lead the ad-hoc committee. And staff has been working on that as well, and we're in the final selection, interview and selection process for that facilitator, and hope to be able to complete that later on this month. Again, the ad-hoc committee was established to be a total of seven members. Council expressed an interest and directed that the seven-member membership would be made up of three tenants, three landlords, and then one neutral party. City council did have discussions of other types of combinations of how this seven-member board could be established. A lot of that was dependent upon how many applications we might have received. With this overwhelming number of applications, we think it's a perfect number of applicants received to be able to continue with the original three tenant, three landlord, and one neutral party member. And we felt a member, a neutral party member would be needed in order to be able to look at the issue of any tie-breaking votes if necessary. At the time, we also had a discussion with the city council about creating subcategories within the tenant, landlord, and other neutral party categories. We did feel that there would be a benefit to being able to, if we could secure enough interested applicants, to be able to secure applicants that could be grouped into tenants living in small buildings, tenants living in medium-sized buildings, and tenants living in large buildings. We did achieve a very wide range of people applying for those three categories, which to continue, to be able to continue the subcategories. For the landlords, we did receive enough applicants interested in being able to create subcategories of those landlords representing units or buildings, properties with a low unit count, and those representing properties with a mid-to-high unit account. And then again, for the other category, we did have people identify themselves as to whether or not they were a landlord advocate, tenant advocate, property manager, or management company, and then someone whether or not they would want to serve as a neutral party. We did receive applicants across those four categories. But given the number of applications that we received for both landlord and tenant, that seventh spot, staff's recommendation at least, should be going to those that applied under the neutral party member category. The subcategories are the categories that the council established. If there may be a desire to change that category, it's possible to look at appointing people at an at-wide basis of just all of those that applied for tenants, all those that applied as a landlord, and all of those that applied as others. And that would be some direction we'd like to get from the city council prior to moving towards any of the discussion of the actual candidates themselves. Also then, discussion about the selection methodology. Option one, and it's really the, we, staff found that there really, there really wasn't a very easy way to be able to go through this process. There's theories and theorems out there that talk about when you are looking to appoint and pick a finite number of people, and you have a very large group to choose from, it's going to be difficult. And they're going to be tied, and there might be multiple rounds of voting to be able to eventually get to a selected committee. So the most easiest option would be to pick. And that would be to pick one member per each subcategory. So again, there are three tenant members allotted for this committee. There are three landlord spots for the committee. So in this particular case, council could go through each subcategory. Tenant's small, and everyone could discuss and say who their number-one pick is for that category, and then we can tally the votes. If after the end of the voting, or the voting for a subcategory, we can then count the votes. If there are any candidates that have received three of five votes to be on that subcategory committee, then you have consensus, and that candidate can be selected and forwarded on as a member to the ad-hoc committee. If there's no consensus, then we'd have to move on to some type of second round of voting and possibly a third round of voting. If we do have incidences of second-round voting and third-round voting, what we would then propose to do is to eliminate those candidates that were not nominated in any way by any of the council members, and then strictly deal with those that were, and then have a discussion on those. So just as an example of that, this, I'd like to point your attention to this category here that I'm moving the cursor on. This is what something like that voting would look like. Let's say it's tenants living in a large-sized building is what we'll tackle first. The applicants are applicants A through F. We would then first ask first council member for alphabetical roll call purposes, Councilmember Agajanian, for large-size tenant category, who is your first pick? Just to pick our example, we would say, you had said that responded with applicant B, and then we'd go on down. You see, at the end, these scores would be tallied, and in this particular case, applicant, applicant B received three of the five votes. We would consider that a consensus and move that and confirm that applicant on the slate to be an ad-hoc committee member. So with that, let me stop sharing this PowerPoint, and then if there are any questions council might have. Our next step would be to then confirm a couple of points that I had mentioned in this PowerPoint. That would be the issue of subcategories, confirming that we would like to pursue the seven member within the subcategories that were previously created. And then, once that is done, then we would be going and starting to structure the selection process.
Okay. Peter, is that it? Mr. Zovak?
That would be it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. First, I want to just say that I think the number of candidates speaks, speaks highly, or applicants, rather, speaks highly of the outreach that staff has done, and I just want to commend you on that. So you've outlined a method, a methodology for us. So I guess, I think the first thing we want to decide, of my colleagues and I, is if we would like to do some vote, to decide on subcategories, one in each subcategory, or at wide. And as I recall, council recommended subcategories when this issue was brought up, when we decided on what we wanted to do. So do I have any objections to us voting on the, one each in the subcategories?
I, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Agajanian.
I, that's, this is a very difficult process. I think we have to nominate a tenant. The tenants are, as we know, in difficult situation anyway, and doesn't matter if it's in four units, or ten units, or twenty units, they have problem. I'm glad that in 2019, we brought some comfort to the tenants by saying that rent should not go higher than seven percent unless the landlord to pay to tenant to leave the complex. So, but however, the tenants have the same issues, basically. Whether it's a big building or a smaller building, their issue is, basically is the same. So that's why this would be a very tedious, difficult way to go through each category and pick up one, and then vote again and again. So let's pick up three people out of this list, which we have, for the tenants, and same, three for low and medium and high landlords, and make it easier. I had the suggestion at the time when we went through this. I said to have each member of council to sign one person, one for tenant side, one for tenant side, one for landlord side. I don't know, that would be ten people with the, somebody who will be not tenant or landlord side. So it would be eleven people. I don't know why we came with this seven at the time I spoke about it, but however, we approved to have seven people to judge or go through this issue. However, to make it easier now, let's decide three from tenant side, three from landlord side, and the one independent one will be, we'll decide what we're gonna do with it. So that's my suggestion at this time, not to go to two this all tedious process of from four to ten, from ten to twenty, from twenty, and tenants' problems are basically the same. I was told earlier that some landlords, they never raise the rent. It's same if it's ten units, or it's two units, or three units. If there is a good-hearted landlord wants to help the tenant, it doesn't matter if they have ten units or four units. I know a person who has ten units and didn't raise the rent for two years. So it doesn't matter how big it is. It has to do with the person. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Agajanian. Any other comments from my colleagues on that?
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with part of what Councilmember Agajanian said. I think the distinction between the size is a little arbitrary, and I think at least on the tenant, it may be more relevant on the landlord's side, actually. But on the tenant's side, I think if we could just pick, you know, three at large, I would, I would, I would suggest that one thing we could do, I'll just put it out there, is, you know, we could each pick our three. That will mean, at the most, we'll have fifteen, and we may have some overlap, so we may have less than fifteen. Maybe we start, see where we are, and and then go from there. And the other thing is, I wouldn't mind if we end up with a slightly larger number today and not make a final decision and have some people come in for interviews, because I know some of the people, but many of them I don't. And, you know, just going off of a brief statement on a piece of paper makes it a little hard. So I would put, you know, ask, ask all of you to consider maybe some process where we narrow the list, just so that it's manageable to do a few interviews.
Okay. If I could, if I could just, let's, let's concentrate on whether we want to go at wide or subcategories. If we go wide, and that means we're going to have to rank twenty applicants. If we go subcategories, we can, we can nominate from a list of first of six, then another six, and then another, what, six. So would be, that actually would be easier than ranking all twenty. And that's just my thought, and I don't know if anyone else has a thought on. Let's stick with that decision right now.
That, that wasn't what I was, I wasn't suggesting ranking. I was just suggesting each of us pick three. And then we see, then we have a pool of maximum fifteen, maybe less than fifteen, and then we could, then we can see where we go from there. Rather than rank them all, I don't really see the value of going through that.
Comments? Councilmember Kusakian, did I see your hand up? No?
I can, I can say that I generally agree with that approach as well. I think the subcategories are, for the tenant's side at least, somewhat arbitrary. And for the others, for the landlords, it may have some bearing. But ultimately, I think that, you know, we each can name three folks that stood out to us and see where we're at. If, after we've gone through all five of us here, and there's some that have accumulated more than one council person's support, not support or vote of confidence, then they can move on to the next next stage. And just see how that goes.
Anyone else? Okay, we can, all right, then we can do that. Each council member name three nominees or three of the applicants that they, however, I am going to ask that we insist that an applicant must have three votes in order to be appointed to the ad-hoc commission or ad-hoc committee. They must have three votes. So.
Mayor Devine, if I may interject.
Yes, is that, so, Mr. Zovak? Go ahead.
I, I don't know if I necessarily heard that, so if I can ask for clarification from you and the council, please, before taking any votes. It's the intent to simply have everyone announce their three picks for, say, the tenant category. And then regardless of how many votes they might get at the tally, bring everyone back for a future discussion? Or, meaning if someone gets four votes, they're not, that doesn't necessarily mean they're appointed to the commission. It just means they've made it to be able to come back for another discussion, whether it takes place at this meeting or a future meeting.
Well, let's make sure we got, we have consensus on that, because I think there was some different views. Madam Mayor?
So you're saying we need consensus? Yeah. Well, I, Mr. Brotman and Kusakian, and what are your thoughts on that? I'm okay with, I will give my comments first, if you don't mind. I'm okay with naming three each, but I am also insisting that there be three votes for the candidates. And I guess what we can do is see how many, how many nominees we have, applicants that are chosen, and then deal with those particular candidates in the second round.
Sir? That makes sense to me.
Mr. Zovak, do, does that sound good to you? Does that make sense to you?
So there will be voting taking place today, but no actual appointment being made today. That's being reserved for a second, another time. Is that correct?
Well, no, we're gonna see how it turns out today. We have, any candidates that have three votes. And if there are none, then there may be some with two votes, and we can discuss and maybe pull one up or change someone's mind.
Okay.
If that doesn't work, then we will wait for another meeting.
So at-large vote, three per council member in the tenant category. Anyone candidate with three votes or more is considered consensus and would be appointed.
Correct. Councilmember Agajanian, go ahead.
I just, still, I wonder since you have, we have so many people are interested to be part of the committee. Why we don't get five of each landlords and tenants? What would be wrong to have more people in that group, since there are so many people are so interested, basically?
Well, Councilmember Agajanian, I think we're trying to keep it under control. Once you get too many people on a committee, it's hard to control, and this would just make it easier for, for everyone concerned, I think, if we keep the number. I think, you know, Burbank, I think, Mr. Zovak, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they only have one of each. I think they have four people on their committee, right?
I believe it's five, and they're just, because it's a simple five, it's a simple appointment per council member.
Okay. I didn't, I don't, I didn't think it was that way. Okay. So I'm sorry, Mr. Agajanian, it just seems like the, the rest of the council feels that we should, of course, I haven't heard from Councilmember Najarian, but that those, the rest of us are willing to nominate three and see how the, the numbers go. Correct? And we're gonna do that alphabetically?
Correct. Staff is suggesting that the, the roll call, if you will, of each council member's three picks just be done alphabetically, as if you were voting on a particular item.
Correct, correct. Okay, so that's, that's the way we'll do the tenant and the landlord selections. But let's start, make it, just kind of make it a little easier today. Let's start with the neutral party. And so there's.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I believe you have a call, at least one call. You might want to take that before we have this continued deliberation.
All righty. Okay, let's hear the phone call.
Karen Kwak?
Karen Kwak? You have three minutes. Go ahead. Karen, can you hear me? Karen, can you hear me? Karen Kwak? Karen, can you hear me? Madam Mayor, I just put her on hold. I know we are getting some phone calls coming in at this point. If you'd like, we can discuss it further and wait until the calls all come in.
Okay. So while I was going to take the the neutral party first, but since we've discussed how we're going to tackle the tenants and the landlords, because I've had too much football, we'll start with, with the tenants, if that's okay. And I think, are we agreed? I just want to make sure that all of my colleagues are agreeable. I know Mr. Agajanian is not. Councilmember Najarian, are you okay with this method?
Yeah, I'm going three. I'm, I'm not a big fan of everyone submitting one, one commissioner. That doesn't necessarily lead to the best makeup of a productive commission.
Okay, all right. Then, then we're settled that we'll each nominate three, and let the chips fall where they may. Okay. Do we have the phone calls ready? Mr. Jamian?
Madam Mayor, I still have Karen Kwak. I'm gonna try her one more time, and I do not have any callers at this time. It looks like they've been dropped off. Give me a second. Karen Kwak? Karen? Karen, can you hear us? Karen? Karen? Madam Mayor, I don't have any callers at this time.
Okay, then, um, let's proceed, um, with the, uh, we'll do the tenants first, and, um, we'll start with, uh, since, uh, I'll let Mr. Councilmember Aga Janian think on this for a minute. Uh, Councilmember Brodmann, do you want to go ahead with your three tenants, um, choices?
Okay, yeah, um, so I would put up, um, Mike Van Gorder, um, Valerie, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, Weich, W-E-I-C-H. Apologies if she's listening, and, uh, Isabella Tivanyan.
Can we repeat that one more time, please? We do have someone that is, uh, inputting onto an Excel spreadsheet, and after the vote is done, we'll display it and share it, so it could be seen.
Okay, I will go ahead and repeat. Uh, Isabella Tivanyan, Mike Van Gorder, and Valerie Weich, or Weich.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Kasakian.
Alright, so, um, there were more than three that I, I felt would be, um, good contributors to this, but if I had to pick three, um, I would pick, uh, from the medium tenant category, Teal Marshand, and I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Um, Mike Van Gorder, and from the small tenants, Nunez Argarian.
Thank you. Did you get those?
I have, uh, the three picks for Councilmember Kasakian, Teal Marshand, Mike Van Gorder, Nunez Argarian.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Najarian.
I'm gonna go with Rubik Azarian, Asia Middleton, and David Zargarian.
Asia Middleton, oh boy, so, and who's the last one?
David Zargarian.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just a point of clarification, just, um, I, I noticed that, was there any relation between the, the two Zargarians? Uh, did staff look into that, or does that, I mean, not that it would matter, I guess? There's nothing to stop someone from applying who's related to another applicant, right? But do we know?
If you give me one minute, so we can check the original apps that are not redacted, that's not something that we had checked, and nor something that came to our attention, so I, I would say no, but I could also, if we wait, I could, I could look into it very quick.
That's fine, that's fine. I mean, I thought both the Zargarian candidates seemed very well qualified. I was just curious. So, it's not important, Madam Mayor, I apologize for the interruption.
Okay, Mr. Aga Janian?
Yes, Rubik Azarian.
Rubik Azarian, hold on a second. Okay, that's his second vote.
Edmund Khodavirdi.
Edmund?
Davit Zagarian.
And Edmund? Who's?
Khodavirdi. Small tenants.
I'm not seeing that on the tenant. Is he on there?
Yes, he's the, one from the bottom.
Oh, Edmund, oh, gotcha, okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay, and my choices would be... Here we go, let's see, um, Teal Marshanda, as well. Uh, as I, I, oh, okay, oops, sorry. Marshanda, uh, uh, Isabella Tivanyan, and Davit Zakarian. Zagarian. Those are my three. So we have one candidate that has three votes. Am I correct? David Zargarian. He has three votes.
Madam Mayor, if I like, I, I could share the Excel sheet unless, uh, the city manager or city attorney is, is keeping a separate track.
Okay, okay. Can you make it big enough so we can actually see it? Although we each have our own copies. Okay. Okay, Isabella has two. Rubik Azarian has two, as well.
Correct.
Teal Marshanda has two. Uh, Ben Gorder has two, correct? Yeah.
Correct.
And Davit has three. So we have four candidates with two votes, one with three. So the question remains, shall we go through the two? The vote, the applicants that have two votes and decide on one of those? Two of those, actually, two of those.
Right. Madam Mayor, I do have Karen Kwak back on the line.
Okay, alright, let's hear from her before we go on.
Karen, you have three minutes, go ahead, Karen.
Hi, I called early, but my call got dropped. I called in again about ten times, and it said that the line would close, and then I should call back when a meeting is on. Okay, so, uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the city staff. I've been watching council meetings for many years, and I'm pleasantly surprised to see that work is actually progressing on this committee, actually a lot faster than expected. Yeah, it's also very nice that you've got so many applicants, and I do tend to agree with Mr. Aga Janian, that, uh, we really should have a larger body to incorporate the diversity that these applicants can offer. And also, yes, that, I understand that property laws are actually based on what kind of unit we live in, but that is very much a property owner's perspective. From a tenant's perspective, it actually doesn't matter what kind of unit we live in, and that is precisely the type of perspective that I would like to be presented on the tenant side of this board. And also, I do hope that your process includes interviews at some point, because I, I think that all current council members have spoken at least once to the candidates for any city advisory board before actually making their appointment. Also, finally, as I mentioned in my email earlier, that people who work for management companies and realtors are very welcome to lend their perspective on the landlord side of this board, because that's where their financial interest is. Thank you very much, bye.
Madam Mayor, that was the only caller at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so did we, uh, counsel my colleagues, did we decide that we're going to choose two members from the, uh, two votes, or do you want to go with all of them that have even just one vote?
Uh, Madam Mayor?
Any thoughts? Any thoughts? Councilmember Brodmann?
Could we see that list again? Uh, I just want to see, how many, how many do we have that have either two? We have one that has three votes.
Yes, we have four, we have four that have two votes, Councilmember Brodmann. We have three that have one vote.
Okay.
I'm sorry, um, yeah, three that have one vote.
Three, one vote.
Four, four that have one vote.
Four that have one vote? Wait, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get this here. We have four that have one vote, four that have two votes?
Mm-hmm.
And one that has three votes? So it's non-people. Okay, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud here, so we have, okay.
So that's why I was saying, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, that's why I was saying to pick up five people. We have one person who has three votes, and four people who have two votes, so all of them together will be five people. It makes it easy, we don't have to decide, uh, keep two of them out of this committee. So they have shown interest, so let them have it.
Councilmember Brodmann?
Yeah, um, another idea would be, take the ones that have two votes or three votes, that's five people, and bring them back for very brief interviews, have them, maybe, we can have some standard questions, have them come in at a future meeting, say a few words, we can ask a few questions, and then we can select three out of that group of five, basically.
Okay.
Are you interested in doing it that way?
Is there a suggestion on the, on the, um, on the table, is, any comments?
I, I, I actually have always preferred the idea. I mean, we talk about Burbank and how Burbank appoints it, and Burbank, uh, potential commission appointees all appear before council, um, and answer questions and are, uh, voted on by the whole council, um, at that time. I think that's, that's reasonable. I'm fine with that. As to how many we bring back, I'm, I'm neutral on that. It could be the ones that have the two votes, it could be the ones that also have at least one vote, that, um, I'm agnostic on, but, uh, I'm fine with bringing folks back for questions.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Najarian, how do you feel about that?
Well, seeing as this is a ad hoc committee with limited direction and limited scope, only serving in an advisory role, I'd like to just appoint these people today and, and get on with it, personally. If it were longer term, if it were greater scope of responsibility, yeah, maybe do the interviews better.
Well, uh, the only problem I have with that is the fact that they will be dealing with the public, and, uh, part of their, um, part of their task is to discuss and evaluate. A lot of it is reviewing and discussing, recommending changes. Um, I hate to drag this out, because, you know, if we interview five, or if we interview all of them, they got at least one vote, uh, you know, we're looking at, you know, a, a lot of time, and, and not only for us to interview, but also for them to get this ad hoc committee going, and I think, um, uh, I, I'd like to move this along as well. Um, let's, um, let's maybe talk about for a little bit the four that were, that got two votes, and, um, uh, why you feel they should be on, and then maybe we can take another vote, see what happens. So, Mr. Brodmann, um, you nominated Valerie, Mike Van Gorder, and Isabella.
Right, um, I, and I, I, and, and, uh, and let me go back to something that Councilmember Kasakian said, because I, uh, I forgot to say that.
Well, Valerie only had one vote, so...
Which, which obviously, we have a lot of good candidates, this is hard, and so just selecting a few is not, uh, uh, is not saying anything negative about the others, we, we, we have a tough choice. So, um, I, uh, I selected Mike, and Mike has, has, we all know Mike, he's run for council, he has dedicated many, many years to, um, tenant advocacy. He also recently got, uh, masters in, um, in urban, uh, urban affairs, or urban planning, I'm sorry, at UCLA, and he's now working at HCD, and so I think he brings a lot of very valuable experience, um, on the policy side and, and, and community involvement. Um, Isabella, uh, I know through, um, through the Unite Here Local Eleven, uh, organization, uh, through the Glendale Tenants Union, uh, I believe, and, uh, and also through the Glendale Democratic Club, she's been active. So she's shown a lot of, you know, passion for, uh, being involved in the community, and then, um, I had picked, um...
Well, Valerie only had one vote, so...
Valerie only had one vote, yeah, okay, so those two are the only ones I'll mention then.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Okay, um, see, Artie, you went for Teal, as did I, and, uh...
You know, I, I don't know what else to add. I mean, obviously, there were other folks on the list that, um, I think are as qualified and, um, bring a lot to the table. I do think that, um, you know, I know that Ms. Marshanda has called in before, and I, we've heard from her on issues, and, um, you know, it seemed that, you know, her answers to the questions were enough to satisfy, um, my, uh, interest in the type of person I'd like to see, uh, working on, uh, issues to bring the community together and to address some of the concerns that both tenants and landlords and other parties may have, so, um, I, I still support of the two that I cast my second votes for, as well as, you know, I, I echo what Councilmember Brodmann said. I think everyone here has known Mr. Van Gorder in a variety of capacities. He's been a candidate before, he's certainly shown that he has a passion and an interest in, in serving this community, and I do think that his time spent, uh, pursuing his graduate degree, uh, at UCLA, um, has, uh, benefited him greatly, as well as his current position, um, with the state. So I think that would be a sound addition as well.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Aga Janian?
Yeah, uh, I just, um, I mean, it's hard to say, they all have good qualification. I picked up Rubik Azarian, uh, one of the reasons was he was the only one I found that he's a real estate, uh, apparently broker or a, somebody who has to do something with it. He has a real estate license, and he is not a landlord. So, I thought will be a good, um, addition to the group, but apparently he didn't get much of his support. But however, uh, I'm fine with either one of them. I went through their, uh, resume. All of them, they have good, uh, resumes, so I don't want to say anything, but, uh, I wish, yeah, the only, uh, person who has knowledge about real estate and is not a landlord, I was hoping that he would be part of this group, but apparently he got only one vote. I never met him, I don't know him. And the rest of them are good, uh, candidates, all of them are good candidates. I don't want to add anything to it. Thank you.
Councilmember Najarian?
Yeah, so Mr. Aga Janian, I also voted for Rubik Azarian.
Oh, that's great, then.
Uh, and I voted for Rubik Azarian, because I was, not so much that he had a, some real estate, but he is a blue collar individual. He apparently is a mechanic and, uh, has a mechanical, uh, enterprise, and you've got to trust the man who works with his hands, as the song goes. Um, so that's why I, I voted for him. I voted for Asia Middleton, because she has a Realtor background, and she also has a financial background. So a lot of these issues are clearly going to be financial, it's not just going to be my, you know, the rent is too damn high. It has to be an understanding of the costs involved, um, on both ends, on both the tenants' and, and the landlord's end. Um, and if I can address Mike Van Gorder, I think Mike has, has really, um, he, you know, he's, he's sort of moved on, and he's gotten very specialized, and, you know, I've read some, I've read some writings of his where he's in the HDC, and he's in the enforcement branch, and gosh darn it, he's not going to let anything slip by. So I think that's a little bit on the extreme side for a commission, uh, touting his enforcement, uh, duties with the HDC. Uh, yes, that was written, uh, and I can address that. I don't want to address the, the publication, because I don't want to give that particular publication any more, uh, knowledge. Uh, he's a little bit on the extreme, I think, on his positions for, um, for housing. Um, I would be happy to support Tivanyan and Teal Marshand if this were to come back for another vote. If there were two others that we would vote for, that would give them, uh, that would give them three votes.
Which, which two? Uh, uh, Councilmember Naj...
Teal Marshand and Isabelle Tivanyan.
Okay.
If we were to have another vote, if that's the way we're going, I would put my vote with those two, which would give them three.
Okay.
Um, I don't, and that's just what I think.
Alright, thank you. Um, and, uh, well, David, um, got three votes, he was one of my choices. Uh, Teal Marshand, um, I voted for him because he has, um, the, uh, went to Cal State, but he's good in mediations, uh, consulting with low-income elderly and single-parent homes. His, he, uh, works with kids and adults, uh, applied behavior analysis. Um, he's a paraprofessional, uh, he's part of the, um, American Bar Association, although he's a non-lawyer. Um, he is, was a member of the tenants' union, and, um, I, I just felt that he's, and he's a motivational speaker, task analysis... task analysis, information, implementation, skill set consultant, active listener. I think he sounds like he would be very fair and and positive on on this committee. So that was why I nominated him. And my other nominee was Isabella, and I I too know her. And she is a very, very outspoken individual, but she is smart. And she has a good background, and she had an apartment manager workshop. She is a tenant, and her her reason for applying to the job was very good, is very good. So.
Madam Mayor, in the in the interest of saving time, if that is where the other, I mean, because I had Isabella Tavanyan as one of mine.
Okay.
The second tier people, I mean, I there was about two other people I also thought would serve this well. If there is three votes or two other votes besides mine for Teal Marshand and Isabella Tavanyan, I would cast my votes to add them to the this ad hoc committee.
Okay, with those three votes, with those three votes.
Councilmember Agaganyan has some comments.
Okay, hold on.
I just.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
If it's, I would go with Isabella also, just to make it easier and let's get this over with.
Thank you. Bless you. So, Mr. Garcia, do we have, do we need to take a final vote on the three?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we do. And my suggestion, you could either do it now, three tenant members, or we could do it at the end when we've gone through the other members, landlord and that large member. But if you want to do it now, what I'm hearing is some general consensus for the three tenant members being Davies Zarkarian, Teal Marshand, and Isabella Tavanyan. So you can make that motion now for those three tenant members, or we can wait until we can wait until the end. It might be easier to to get rid, to do that part of it now and get that, get that part of it done. And then you the council can move on to the landlord members and the the.
Madam Mayor, I'd I'd like to make that motion that we approve these as the tenant members of the ad hoc committee.
Second, second. Roll call, please.
Madam Mayor, before before the roll call, so nobody's interested in having people come in for interviews?
No.
Is there?
I I I am, but.
Just Kasakian.
I I I am interested in having people come in for interviews, but I don't, I'm not going to. It appears that we may, we are in the minority, Councilmember Brotman, in that regard.
I just wanted to make sure before we went to a vote. All right.
Okay, roll call, please. Who made the motion?
I did.
Fresh? Oh, Kasakian made the motion.
Councilmember Agaganyan seconded.
Seconded, thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agaganyan?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Okay, then, we can move on to landlords. And again, let's see, landlords, sorry, again, let's, shall we do it the exact same way? Three, three nominations each, and we'll see where it ends up. Seemed to work okay this time.
Yeah.
Are we all in agreement? Okay, let's start with Council. Yeah.
I I do, in this particular category, I do need to make mention of of one typo that was made and brought to staff's attention.
Okay.
In the mid-high category, Terry Argren. Listed as lives in Glendale, yes. She clarified, her answer is no.
Okay.
On that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so let's start with Mr. Councilmember Agaganyan. Are you ready to name three?
Yes. Rozmic Gregorian.
Smick, okay. One.
Mr. Mitka or Miz Ala Khalajian.
Okay.
And Mr. Shannur Obsepian.
Cepian, Obsepian, okay, thank you. Councilmember Brotman.
Okay, and again, there were many good names on the list, but being forced to choose, I have, I have my three here are Carmen Arum, Rozmic Gregorian, and from another category, but I think would be good here, is Jennifer Schultz-Birdlet.
See, she's. She's on, she's on the other.
Property manager, but.
I I actually, since since Councilmember Brotman brought it up, I I would, I was wondering about that. You know, I I liked Jennifer Schultz as well, because, you know, she obviously, her her resume and bio makes her amply qualified for this. But I I was a little puzzled as to how she landed in the neutral party category, and I wouldn't mind seeing her on this as well if she was possibly categorized as maybe a landlord. Why, can the staff answer that or give us some clarity as to how to go about that?
Yeah. Yes, compliments. On the application, it was stated as being a representative of the property management area of business, not so much as a landlord. And so that's the way they were listed in the other category. If you recall, way back when, not knowing if you would get three good candidates who are actual tenants or three good candidates that were actual landlords, the ability to also solicit people that claim to be landlord advocates, tenant advocates, and or property managers or real estates were opened in the other category. And so that's how Ms. Schultz fell into that category. Does that mean, then, that you can't move someone who you could, by the basis of their application, say that they would make a good landlord rep and and a good person to fit the landlord category? I believe that to to the council and maybe the city attorney to be able to opine on that, but.
Can we ask the city attorney to give us some clarification on that? Because I I could see Ms. Schultz as a very good member to represent landlords, given that the Schultz family presence and experience in this city.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Kasakian. So the what the the resolution establishing the committee states is that that the council seek to find and give preference to a diverse mix of landlord and tenant representatives, including the following. And then it references that they be landlords. So, oh, actually, I apologize. It says landlords or landlord representatives. So I guess as long as they are representative of landlords, either through being owner or or working in a management company, I I believe that would be permissible.
Mr. Garcia, how did she self-identify?
I have to refer to that, Mr. Zovak, to that question.
They had self-identify.
They did, but again, maybe because she works for a management company or she's representative of landlords, she identified herself that way.
All right, online, there were boxes in the application process to say, are you a, are you applying as a tenant? Are you applying as a landlord? Are you applying as a real estate agent, property management company, tenant representative, landlord representative? And that's the box that was checked on her.
So she self-identified as management company, real estate agent?
Correct, as her career. And I guess what's being discussed is whether or not the council considers that a good representative or a landlord category.
And it appears to me, counsel, that it, the resolution allow, would allow that flexibility for the landlords. It says landlords or landlord representatives. So I I would take that to mean anybody who either a a, an owner of a rental property or a representative such as a employee or manager of a management company that that advocates or represents landlords.
Well, Madam Madam Mayor, since I I believe Councilmember Brotman made his recommendations and it would be my turn in the rotation to go next, I would like to ask that we, one of my recommendations would be Ms. Jennifer Schultz for the landlord nominee, as well as Mr. Rozmic Gregorian and Ms. Carmen Arum as well for the landlord side.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you. Although I, you know, I I just, I I don't want to usurp Jennifer Schultz's selection. You know, she has a an objection that we don't know about. Okay, let's take Councilmember Najarian next.
Okay, well, since we've reclassified Jennifer Schultz as a candidate for landlord, I will go with Jennifer Schultz, Mr. James Son, and Rozmic Gregorian.
Okay, thank you. And that leaves me, right? Right, so I will, you know, I will also go with Jennifer Schultz and James Son. Seems to have a really good background. And I also had, let's see, oh, here it is, Michael Ogjogin. So that's, those are my three. So we have Rozmic with four. We have Jennifer with four. But we don't have a third. So that's, that's where we are. Am I correct, Mr. Zovak? We don't, we have Carmen Arum has two votes. Am I correct?
And James Son has two votes, right?
Two votes, yes.
Correct.
We're displaying the tally sheet right now, Madam Mayor. So Jennifer Schultz with four votes, Rozmic Gregorian with four votes.
Okay.
And then both Carmen Arum and James Son with two votes, and then three one votes.
Okay, so it seems that the choice now becomes Carmen or James Son. And I'm going to go to, we, Carmen is a real estate broker, correct? And we already have Jennifer Schultz as a real estate broker. So that's one of the reasons that I selected James Son. He's a Berkeley grad. He's has a family apartment. He has, let's see, financial, healthcare, he worked for a healthcare company, paralegal in business affairs, Apartment Owners Association. I mean, he has, he has extensive experience in property management, knowledge in reviewing contracts and agreements, knowledge in real estate law, and knowledge in financial spreadsheets. Extensive experience and knowledge, living in Glendale for over forty-five years.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Brotman.
Yeah, he was also high up on my list. It was between him and Carmen, so I will put my vote to him if.
Okay, that will give us three for Mr. Son. Okay, I think that does it. For landlords, then, we'll have James Son, Rozmic Gregorian, and Jennifer Schultz. Do I have any objections? Is there a motion?
Move the item.
I'll second the motion to approve the landlord members.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agaganyan?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. Oh, this is going so smoothly, everyone. Thank you. Let's go to the next, the other. And here, we only have, unfortunately, we only have one nominee. So let's go, I guess, down the list. Just do, okay, let's go down the list. Councilmember.
Yes, I can start.
Do you want to start? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Councilmember Agaganyan.
I'm offering Victor Hyropetian, who is an attorney, so he has some knowledge about the real estate. I can't think, he lived in Glendale for a long time, but I just met him one time for ten minutes, while ago. But I, through the resume, and I found that he will be capable of doing something good for us.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, I I also, I looked at Victor's profile, but I saw he does not live in Glendale.
Yeah.
I would, I would vote for Manuel McPopian. I think many of us know Manuel, and he's demonstrated a lot of commitment to the communities on the Glendale Parks and Open Space Board, and he's on the YWCA board. And good guy, and I think he's a very balanced guy. He's an attorney as well.
Councilmember Kasakian?
So my, the three that jumped out at me, and I've known the work of all of these individuals, were Manuel McPopian, Victor Hyropetian. Both attorneys, Victor, by the way, did extensive work with tenant landlord issues in the last two decades here in Glendale. And then Chris Kypekian, Coco Kypekian. So those were the three that jumped out. But, you know, I guess if I had to select one based on the residency and involvement in the YWCA, I would probably vote for, it would be between Victor Hyropetian and Manuel McPopian, and I can go either way. I'll I'll go with Mr. McPopian on this.
Mr. McPopian? He, okay, thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
Thank you. So I think we need, I mean, we're looking for someone who's neutral. And I think the YWCA is very much an advocate for tenants in their housing justice and housing equity rights. That was my only drawback on Mr. McPopian. But I think Victor Hyropetian really should be the choice. He worked on our just cause eviction ordinance. As an attorney, he represents both sides, and he sits as a judge pro tem, actually hearing the cases and making the decisions on both sides. I mean, that's about as neutral, I think, as you can get. The only drawback is, looks like, looks like Financial Good Fortune smiled on him. I think he moved out of Glendale to a, some might say, a better neighborhood, but I would doubt that strongly. They don't have their own fire department or police department up there. But I think that aside, I think he really has the in-depth knowledge and the the exhibited neutrality of hearing both sides and doing what's, doing justice when he makes his decisions. So that's who I would vote for.
Okay, so that, so that's two for Victor Hyropetian. My vote was going to Narne Kodadon Davian. She's a jurist doctor, Southwestern Law School. She's an attorney for commercial landlords and tenants, so she's both real property, real estate transactions. And her application was stellar, stellar. But having, but when I looked at my other numbers, one, two, and three, as I rank them, Victor was number two, and Mark was number three. So, let's see, I really would like to have someone who lives here in Glendale, but.
If I'm not mistaken, I do think his business is in Glendale, though.
Victor, Victor?
I think his practice is in Glendale.
That's in Montrose on Verdugo Road.
Oh, okay, then that, I'll swing my vote to Victor. So that gives him three votes, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so do we have a motion, please, for?
Move to approve Victor Hyropetian for neutral party.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Agaganyan?
Yes.
Brotman?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Devine?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Was that for both of those, Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, well, that was for the large member. You had previously taken a vote.
Appointed, okay.
Yeah, so you're all, you've appointed all seven members.
Okay, thank you very much to my colleagues who are working so collaboratively. I I really appreciate that. What's next, please?
Next would be adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we are adjourned at four twenty. Moving on to City Council. Okay, I'll call to order the January eighteenth meeting of the Glendale City Council for January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agaganyan?
Present.
Brotman?
Brodmann?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Devine?
Here. And what's next, please?
One is closed session, one a conference legal counsel. Attending litigation, Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association versus City of Glendale, LASC case number 22STCP00114. B would be public employment attorneys. C would be conference with legal property negotiators. City negotiators attending the closed session are Rubik Galanian, Phil Anzafim, Mark Berry, Onik Blonnikian, Michael J. Garcia, and Jillian Van Myden. Property location APN 5630-026-904. Negotiating parties, Nune Serobian. Instructions to negotiators will concern the price and terms for the sale of the property.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, do you expect to report out on any of these items?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We anticipate reporting out on item 1B.
Okay. Then we will recess to closed session. Thank you.